So I am listening to you read this and then you just say, I, I, I. Okay. I, Halle Haller Smith, do solemnly swear that I will, as member of the Board of Trustees of the Southwest Ohio Region Transit Authority, support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that I will honestly, faithfully, and impartially perform the duties of my office, that I will not be personally interested directly or indirectly in any contract let by said regional transit authority, that I will not violate or knowingly permit to be violated any of the statutes of the state covering the operation of a transit authority, and that I will perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability so far. I agree. Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Welcome. Let's right, jump right into the board meeting. And we have hearings from citizens. I don't have any signed up. Want to make sure that anyone has an opportunity? Okay. Hearing none. A little bit of an update from me today. My thoughts right now are very much with Philadelphia and some of the other cities that are facing transit challenges. Philadelphia, cutting 34 bus routes on Sunday, planning to up their fare by 20%, cutting, I think between 20 and 30% of service across the board, and even cutting rail on top of that. And that was because of a massive funding shortfall that the state was not able to come in and help them out with. I saw commentary online about how that creates a spiral that will be an incredible challenge for them to come out of. There is hope for that system, hope for the students that ride that system to school, hope for the communities in that there could be additional funding coming if the State House can get that worked out. There are other cities facing the same challenge right now and will be coming in the next year. So I mentioned this also because I'm incredibly proud of Sorta right now and Cincinnati, the region, the leadership here, because of what we've been able to do to maintain stability through the many challenges of the past several years. I've been at a few transportation conferences over the past couple of months, and I wanted to note like how proud I am of some of the staff from Sorta presenting at these conferences. I was at one session where two of Halle's team members presented, and I think they got every question. Maybe there was one for one other agency, but, but they dominated. There was a panel that two of our staff did on the hybrid buses, and there was just a ton of people surrounding them, talking to them. I did jokingly ask from the back, why is Sorta the best system in the country? And they handled my question with a smile. Everybody understood what was going on there. So we're doing well. I was in Denver at that conference, and I was looking at their Bus Rapid Transit System that they're building, and probably doing a little too much comparison here, but they started in 2010 with the route that we were reviewing. They planned to finish in 2027. We started 2020 and planned to finish in 2028, so it's great to see what we're doing. Learned a lot of lessons. I walked that construction site for several miles with RTD and consultant staff, and it bolstered me on what we're doing. It made me feel very confident about the approach that we're taking. There were little things that I came back and asked a lot of questions about. They, they hit historic preservation delays there, asking questions, do we have an agreement? Do we have a plan on this? And every question I've asked so far has been handled just excellent. So putting that out there, and it also brings me back to something I'm sure Andy will talk about at the end of the board meeting, but I've heard nothing but accolades for the beginning of the school year. Everything seems to be going well. There are always challenges. There are always full buses that adjustments have to be made, but that's great. I think the school system is doing a great job. I'm so happy with what we're doing there. All right. With that all said, it's a great work team, great work board. Now let's launch into the committees and committee reports. Unfortunately, Chelsea can't be here tonight. I think it is a parent-teacher night at her school, and she's at the right place. So, yep. Oh, I skipped over the minutes. So, Pete, so moved, do I have a second?
Second.
Probably moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say left. Any extensions? The minutes are passed. Thank you very much. Takes the team. All right. So finance, we will be going over the financials later in the meeting, so I'll leave it for that. Chelsea sent me some notes about what happened in the committee. Imagine several of you were there. One important note that I will pull out is that I understand there is a deep dive going on on maintenance, and that that was discussed in the committee as opportunity for kind of addressing some financial issues. So looking forward to hearing more about that deep dive when that is finished. All right, so moving on to planning and ops. Pete?
Yeah. Great updates on Metro Rapid, including next steps on, oh, we have a metro. Great updates on Metro Rapid, including selection, or next steps on selection for vehicle type, which is an important milestone for us, and also echoing Blake's perspective that the way we're making decisions on this is really organized and thoughtful. So credit to the team for that and for bringing issues before us and helping keep us, keep us abreast. We did a deep dive into the KPIs on Metro Rapid, I'm sorry, Metro Now, which was a really important and thoughtful conversation. There's a lot of math that I didn't understand, but appreciate that the outcome was a set of, of goals and metrics that we'll start seeing in our ridership report, and talked a little bit about a follow-up as we go into budget season and strategic planning around sort of how do we think about the financial side of, of that program. And then we had three relatively straightforward procurement items, one related to keeping our rail process moving forward with the FTA, and then two procurement items that helped us get the Riverfront Transit Center back open expeditiously. So that was the agenda.
Would you like to move that consent agenda?
I will gladly move the consent agenda.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded. Any questions or concerns? We can always take items off the consent agenda if needed. All right. Hearing none, this is a roll call.
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Dreehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much. Anything else, Pete? All right. This is a great month. We got to have infrastructure bike and row. My understanding is Dan and Sarah will take this on today?
Yep, sure. Always a great meeting when you can include infrastructure, bike and row. So thank you to Sarah, the former chair of this committee, for handling the committee meeting. I was out of town, and Sarah, who is most able to handle the, the subject, because she was the chair of this committee for over a year, and actually made some significant changes, helped to foster some significant changes to the program during her tenure. So we can see the results of that in the report that was presented at committee. And Sarah also recommended that Jason or Halle, that we go through the particulars of the program. There's some great updates in here. I think we have done a good job of amplifying the successes of this program so that people know that the issue seven is well beyond only bus routes, and, and I think we'll continue down that road with the successes like we've had this year. The elected officials are certainly learning, and with all the placards and that that we put up at our projects, people see our name out there quite a bit. But as we talk more and more with other groups outside of elected officials, I think it's becoming more and more apparent to people that through Metro, they're seeing increased improvements in pedestrian safety, access to public transit, and road improvements. So I think the presentation will lend itself to that, and there are a few action items at the end. So who do I turn it over to? Jason? Thanks.
Yeah. Just to remind the board before Jason gets his slides up and go through the presentation. Last year, based on the meeting that we had with the jurisdictions and got their feedback on the program, as we always do, one of the recommendations was to split the single pot of money into two, you know, big projects versus small projects. And we brought this to the board with the, you know, modification of the guidelines, and the board approved that. So for this year, year five, that's how we proposed the, the program to the community is we're going to have two pots, the big project over a million dollars and the small projects under a million dollars. And we see proposals accordingly, and we think it was a huge success. And Jason will go over the detail of, of round five.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. So back in March, we started our call for projects or proposals. We held a call with all the jurisdictions and went over the changes that we'd made to the guidelines, the, and the recommended changes that the board had made in, in January that we included for this funding cycle. At May, the proposals were due, and in June and July, the field team, the evaluation teams really got started on desk reviews as well as field reviews of each project. And then last week, we presented to the Infrastructure Bike and Road Committee the recommended funding package. Next slide, please. So the results of round five, we received 41 proposals from 25 different municipalities. Seven municipalities submitted more than one proposal. Next slide, please. So as Halle said, that we had, we had done a lot of analysis, looking at the first four rounds of MTIF and the amount of applications that had been coming in annually, and the types of projects that they were requesting. And we defined large and small categories at a million dollars. So what we found was through our analysis is that 66, about two-thirds of our proposals were over a million dollars, and what we were going to be funding previously, what we considered to be large projects. We had looked at a lot of different splits and how we thought that those funding splits might impact MTIF, and we really landed on two-thirds for large category projects and one-third for small category projects as an appropriate split. And over those 41 proposals, Natalie, if you'll go to the next slide, what we learned is that our analysis was spot-on. We actually really did have our finger on the pulse of the program because the, the results were less than a percent off of our, of our analysis. The large category projects defined as more than a million dollars, so it's not necessarily in scale of the size of the project, it's just the amount of funding that they're requesting. The, the funds, the projects that came in requesting more than a million dollars were 18 million dollars, and that represented almost exactly two-thirds of what was being requested for this funding cycle. The green highlighted projects are the projects that are recommended for award. The Sycamore Township project that we have highlighted there originally came in a project request of 4.9 million dollars. We reviewed that application and determined that there were some ineligible elements to that application. We worked with Sycamore Township to remove those ineligible items, and we were able to reduce that, that project by about $700,000. Those funds were able to be awarded to other projects within, within the funding package this year. The Cincinnati Warsaw Avenue project, we reviewed that project. It was also a 2021 round one approved project that we funded. That project is within the same limits for this year's application, and what we'd found is that they have some gaps in their funding, and they were, they were applying for Metro Transit Infrastructure Funds to help fill those gaps, which is defined by our guidelines as a project cost overrun. And as much as we support that project, we want to see it to be successful. Unfortunately, the guidelines prohibit us from supporting a project on our cost overruns beyond the next funding cycle. If jurisdiction has awarded a project and they identify they have some funding gaps, they can apply for more funds, but they have to do it the next funding year. And since that project was awarded in 2021, they were ineligible for project overrun cost this year.
When would they be able to come back again, or?
For that project, unfortunately, they won't unless, unless they decide that they want to return the funds that were previously awarded in 2021 and then reapply for future funding. Next slide, please.
Can I ask a quick question on that? And this is definitely committee work, but maybe to put a pin in it, I imagine with the cost of construction, we're going to deal with that problem on other projects in the future. Might be worth considering how we, how we handle that, because I, like, I understand the process, not sure that returning the funds and reapplying puts, puts a lot of things at risk, so worth considering in the future.
It's, this is certainly the first time it's come forward in this capacity, where we have to, you know, take a look at what our options are. For small project category, we received the most number of projects in this funding category. Again, they're not small in scale or importance, it's just the amount of funds that they're requesting. Thirty-three percent of the funds were allotted for small project categories. As you can see here, 10, more than $10 million was requested for small projects. The green category projects, again, are the ones that were recommended for funding. The Montgomery Road Sidewalk Edition Project, we were able to work with Montgomery on reducing that application. They had some ineligible costs included with their application as well, but believe it was contingency that was more than what's eligible, as well as some inflation costs that they had built into their estimate. Those things unfortunately are just not approved for, are eligible for MTIF funding, so we were able to remove those costs and reduce that amount of award. Next slide, please. So staff is requesting the approval of the awarded recommendation to, to move forward to the Integrating Committee along with the contracts for these projects. Round five, the total award of projects is more than $28 million, and with the committed 14.5 for Western Hills Viaduct, round five total funding is 42.8 million. In summary, we're going to award 27 projects of the 41s that were, were requested to 20 jurisdictions. That is drastically different than, than the seven projects, nine projects we awarded to 41 requests last year in only, in only seven jurisdictions. So when we look at the results of the thought that went into how we can improve the program last year and what we recommended to the board, we are very happy and pleased with the outcome of that. Next slide, please. So we were able to update our distribution map because this year we are, we added a fundee. We are now funding St. Bernard with their first project, so it brings us to 35 jurisdictions that have been funded. We will now be up to 124 projects and more than $349 million since 2021. The next five slides are the contracts and the languages within those contracts. And then finally, the next steps, if approved, we will move forward to the Integrating Committee and share the recommended funding package with District Two Integrating Committee. We'll then move into agreements with the awardees, and funds will be made available in 2026. Thank you. Do we have any questions?
I probably have some questions, discussions, so thank you, Jason, for putting that forward, and a lot of changes, right? Since, we've learned a lot in this five-year period of time, and thanks for the leadership, again, of the board members like Sarah and others that made some of those changes, recommended some of those changes, and staff certainly for leading us through this. So I think what's interesting to notice on the large projects, there are plenty of jurisdictions that are not the city and the county that are awarded large projects, and that was one potential concern, that smaller jurisdictions might not apply. At the same time, the city of Cincinnati applied for several that were under a million and received them. So people did adjust, right? They did their homework, they adjusted. It also says, part of the feedback that you provided and gave is that these projects need to be ready to go. And also, some of the applicants only asked for 50%, and that showed that they have skin in the game. And that certainly, if you look at the numbers, a lot of them that asked for 50% in that range received favorable ratings. So it's one of many factors, but it did lend itself to that. So a lot of jurisdictions were included. Coal Rain received several of projects that were funded. They gave us some direct feedback last year. I think we didn't plan it this way, but it did work out for Coal Rain and other jurisdictions, like Sycamore Township got a substantial amount of money, but they didn't get everything they asked for. And then Jason and Halle again worked with them to, to, to ask them not to request as much, reduce their request so that it could go through. So thanks for all your hard work, and that is a big success for the voters, really, issue seven, and our organization to push all these projects forward. So as Jason said, the next stage is to go to the committee, the Integrating Committee over at the county. So our recommendation, there are two motions that need to be approved tonight. The first is for the MTIF funds, the second is for, for the Viaduct funding. So two separate proposals, the way I understand it, right? And then they'll go over to the integration, Integrating Committee at the county level. So.
Just for clarification, the Viaduct is a completely separate request, so.
Right.
Yeah, we'll deal with that next.
Okay, so we won't go on that now, we'll just give a presentation about that next. Okay. Any questions or comments for Jason? Sarah, do you have anything else from the committee meeting you want to add?
The only thing I'll add is this statistic, which really sticks with me. Last year, as Jason said, we were only able to fund nine projects, which was 25% of the applicants. This year, by funding 27 projects, that is 66% of the applicants. So that, that's just a dramatic increase from 25 to 66%, and I'm just so pleased that we were able to help so many communities in Hamilton County.
I'll echo on top of that, that, a lot of that was because of your leadership, Sarah. So good job.
You guys did all the math.
And, oh, I'm, I'm going to recognize Jason as well. You said that your analysis, well, you didn't say your analysis was spot-on, you said that.
You hit her finger on the pulse of it.
All the numbers lined up. I'm saying your analysis was spot-on. Amazing work last year, and recommendations that clearly played out just right, and that's because of your thorough work. You went back, you analyzed every year, every proposal that was, that came in across multiple models, and I can't thank you enough for doing that high level of work that everybody does here at Metro, right? That's the standard we're setting. And Halle, of course, your leadership of that team doing the work. Thank you so much. Halle, did you want to jump in and say something? It looked like you were.
No, thank you.
Okay.
I did, when I had one other comment, St. Bernard, for the first time, received funding. It's the first time that jurisdiction had received it. They, they learned a lot over the few years. Go ahead.
Great, great work on this, and, and I, I think one of the things that, that I noted was the diminishing percentage on a number of these projects that they're requesting. And one of the things that we envisioned when we created this program was that this money could be leveraged, right? So we made it possible to ask for a significant amount of the projects so we could actually move projects, but the goal and the hope was always that this money could be served as local match for other state or federal money. And it looks like that is beginning to happen as, as jurisdictions become a little bit more strategic about how they use this and take it and make it more than that. So that's only good news for our community, and I'm really excited to see that that's, it took some time to, to figure that out, but I think some of that was time on our part and some of that was time on their part, so I'm, I'm really happy to see that.
Something that I wasn't able to figure out exactly how to include within the presentation. One of the other recommendations we made back in January was community connectivity. So our field teams was considering community connectivity along with economic development. And that St. Bernard project is on Tower Avenue that happens to host St. Bernard Elementary School. So the road that goes along that elementary school centers receive improvements and also improve the connectivity to that, that elementary school.
Sarah, would you like to move it? I don't know.
So I'll entertain a motion to.
Sure.
Tony?
Looking at the agreement, and when you get a month to the townships, who monitors the prevailing wage portion of that?
The, the laws of, under the local and state laws that they procure under, they're responsible to follow local and state laws. We, we review the elements of their application to make sure that when they apply for reimbursement that those, those costs are reimbursable, but we don't necessarily go as far as looking at the prevailing wage, the certified payroll, those types of things. We don't do that.
I understand you guys wouldn't, wouldn't be the ones doing that, but my question would be, so once they secure the funds and they awarded the contractor, if something happened on one of the projects, because it got public money in it, then what would be a course of action? Would they not be allowed to apply for funding if something was to happen, considering that they wouldn't have a prevailing wage coordinator on, on the project?
Can, I don't know that I have a direct answer. We have, we have, within our eligibility guidelines, there is language in there for performance, and there's language in the contract for remedy as well as termination. So I would have to kind of go back and review those elements specifically to be able to provide a direct answer, but I'm glad to, to do that and get back with you.
Well, I would like to make a motion that we approve the 2025 infrastructure fund projects as presented in this report.
And refer it over to the Integrating.
And refer it over to the Integrating Committee.
Properly moved. Do I hear a second? All right, probably moved and seconded. Any last moments for questions, concerns, comments?
Yeah, I'll abstain, because I'm an elected official at one of the jurisdictions receiving funding, so out of an abundance of caution, I think I should abstain. And if Chelsea was here, she'd probably do the same, just because we're elected officials.
I just have one quick question, being new and reading some background. Is this process annual? I understand 25, okay, so I see round five, it was passed in 2020, so we will go through this every year. Thank you.
If I may, just comment that this is a good moment to think about. How did this process work out for this year? Are there rules, challenges, changes that we might want to make to the system? And we have the rest of the year to consider that as a board. And I would say most years, we have made some modifications to the system, so that's the, the moment of, of agency here. So feel free to have discussions, talk with Halle, Dan, Sarah, anybody on the board to better understand the whole process. And, you know, we're, we're just talking as, as Pete was bringing up this multi-year issue, something we should look at and think about. But now we are voting, sorry, not, not time for me to make a speech. Time to, to go ahead and vote, unless there's any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, roll call.
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Dreehouse?
Abstain.
Abstain. Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
The motion passes. Now we have one more item?
We do. So thank you, everybody, for passing that big item. The next one relates with the Western Hills Viaduct, and I do not have that pulled up in front of me. So this, we have agreed in issue seven, as an organization, to fund, provide funding for the Western Hills Viaduct on behalf of the county and the city of Cincinnati, from what I understand. And the motion, recommended actions are to approve the resolution approving, this is not that, Metro agrees to allow the flexibility, no, this is not that.
It's an amendment, right, to the agreement?
Yeah, okay. Approval of the resolution.
What the amendment is, yeah.
Approval of a resolution, approve. Approval of the resolution, approval of a resolution approving the First Amendment to Project Grant Agreement of the Western Hills Viaduct Replacement Project Agreement and authorizing our CEO, General Manager, Secretary Treasurer to sign the amendment. That is what needs to be approved.
Thank you for getting through that, Dan. I don't think I could have said that.
Well, I had the words in front of me.
Yeah, I can provide a little bit of background. Thank you. This is just a structural amendment to the agreement. The amount of funds awarded back in 2021 was $205 million. The amount of funding would remain unchanged with the amendment and the number of dollars provided each year from here forward would remain unchanged. It's simply a matter of some of those funds were envisioned to be debt service and some of those funds were envisioned to be reimbursement for project expenses. As the years go by and the project hasn't yet begun, the ratio of which years are reimbursement for project expenses and which, which years are debt service changes. And there's also a bit of phasing that they're doing in order to apply for and match federal funds. All of that gets wrapped into this amendment so it's clear that we can make the reimbursements in accordance with the program. But the total amount of dollars and the timing of how those dollars get released from the funds are unchanged, but the amendment needs to be made to align with the project plan.
Thank you.
And the request came at the behalf, the city requested us to make this amendment in order to align with their overall funding structure and plan for the project. And legal counsel, last note, sorry, legal counsel has reviewed as well and Kim and her team have had a chance to look at the proposed changes and the amendment and have concurred with the, the language.
Okay. Well, thank you for helping us understand that, Andy. Are there questions from board members on the subject? Okay, I'll put forth a motion to approve. Is there a second? Pete seconds. Is this a roll call?
Ms. Amott?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Drehouse?
Yes.
Mr. Etheridge?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Metz?
Yes.
Ms. Moss?
Yes.
Ms. Sheets?
Yes.
And Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, Dan. I appreciate it.
My pleasure.
Taking us through all of that. So we do have a few more items now that we've gotten through committees. I think we have the financial results and then Andy's update and then the opportunity for any new business. So Mr. Walker, you want to take it away?
Thank you, Mr. Etheridge. We'll go through these kind of quick. I know you, everyone has these in your packet and maybe we're at the finance committee meeting. Starting off the, for the high level summary, the total revenue came in at $13.9 million, which was slightly unfavorable to budget. And I guess I'll use Blake's wording, it was spot on because there's no percentage, there's no percentage there because it is 0%. So some great budgeting there. It was, like I said, it was slightly unfavorable and that was due to fares being unfavorable, which were offset by the sales tax investments and advertising. On the expense line, came in at $13.8 million. That was unfavorable to budget and this has some, some good news component to it with, with Adrian Harrison and the HR team. You know, we really have had a, a robust recruiting cycle. And so from a staffing standpoint, you know, we're seeing an unfavorable, you know, wages piece really for the, the operators and the trainees that we have. I believe the, this is the highest operator headcount we've had in 24 and 25 and someone said maybe of all time, which is some great news for the organization. Also, the bad news piece of it is we're seeing some materials, the costs creep there. And that's something that we don't believe is going to be ending anytime soon. So as, as Mr. Etheridge mentioned, we're going through some contracts to see which ones we can, we can, some of our purchases, to see where we can enter into some longer term contracts, possibly get some fixed pricing in there so that we can better plan. So we're keeping a close eye on that one. You net the two numbers together and we came in at a $57,000 operating profit for the month, which was slightly unfavorable to budget. Your total ridership number was over a million. Again, a little unfavorable to budget and slightly unfavorable to, from prior year. Natalie, can we go to the next page? This is my favorite page, as everyone knows. I really want to focus on the right-hand side and let's first look at the, under the non-operating revenue line, you can see the county sales tax year-to-date, we are, we are favorable by almost $300,000, which is some great news since that is a primary revenue driver for the organization. But also want to highlight, last year at this time, we, that was a deficit of $2.3 million to budget. So some great news there managing that. Looking at the bottom line, total operating capital contribution or surplus or profit, however you want to look at it, came in at almost $3 million, which was a million one greater than our budget and almost about $940,000 greater than last year at this time. Next page, Natalie. And this is our sales tax. And to ground the group here, again, we, our sales tax is on a three-month delay. So right now, we have four months' worth of actuals that we're dealing with and, and those are accounted for in that favorable variance of almost $300,000. But on a month-by-month basis, just want to let you know from a year-over-year standpoint, you know, January was 4.3% greater than last year, February was 1.2, March was 13.3% and April was 5.6%. So we are trending in the, in the right direction with our sales tax. So really good news to, to see that. And you wait that completely and we're 6.4% greater than we were last year. We monitor this, as everyone knows, it's the number one driver, so we keep a close eye on this in case we have to pivot. And really, I'm going to open up to any questions, if anyone has any, any questions for me. Don't see any hands. Thank you, everyone.
One question. I wasn't able to make the finance committee meeting. We had some other meetings that were going on. There was a significant sales tax holiday in August. Do we know how that's going to play out for us this year?
We don't know, Mr. Etheridge. Last year was eight days. The prior two years before that, it was really just a long, a weekend. This year was two weeks. But also, if you recall, last year, we, we received a, a separate payment a couple months later. So we don't know, we had, we had a bit of the holiday in our budget for this year, but we will see that. We won't be seeing that probably until November.
Okay.
With it, with our, I know it's crazy, but that's our three-month delay, so we'll see that a little bit later on. But we did account for a piece of it, not a full two weeks.
I think everybody would be excited to hear if that true-up for one better term comes ahead of time or if we hear word of that from the state, right?
You will be the first to hear of the true-up.
Okay. Thank you. I have a little anxiety there, but other than that, I think, you know, great numbers, right?
But no, we keep looking at it, but again, sales tax, it's nice to see the trending, Mr. Etheridge, and great to see the improvement over prior year.
Thank you very much. Progress and priorities?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I'll, I'll preempt what I think will be maybe one of the first discussion points before we close the meeting, and that was the board asked for updates about back to school. So we're now one week into the new school year. We talked about it quite at length in committee, the fact that we, Metro took on when CPS made the decision to put all seventh and eighth graders on Metro, that meant 12 new schools that we had not previously served. We talked about the collaboration with the CPS team and how good it has been, the collaboration with the city and how good it has been. And just happy to report that we had a very good first week of school. You know, you've probably not heard much about it in the news and that's always a good thing. Things have been operating very, very smoothly. It is a massive team effort, not only with our external partners at CPS and the city, but internally as well. John Revazio is our quarterback of our internal team and does an incredible job of making sure all of those moving parts are taken care of. We were at 24 schools to provide support for those folks, new parents and new students on the system. I think overwhelmingly, things went very smoothly. And again, we're now a full week into school. School started last Wednesday, so this will be our fifth school day that we've experienced and all as well. It's a lot of folks downtown as well, making sure kids are going where they need to go. So happy to take any questions on that. That's an interim report. It usually takes two weeks for things to really wear in and deal with, you know, maybe like you said, bus that's overcrowding or so on and so forth. I, I don't want to speak for CPS, but they did have a board meeting last night and they did send praise your way and thanking Metro for the partnership and they had good things to report about their experience with Metro the first week of school as well. So happy to take any questions on that front before I jump into the report.
Any feedback on the bus passes or?
The passes?
Yeah.
I mean, they're still in the process of making sure every student has a pass and that usually is a rollout period. And we're still in the process of collecting that first tranche of data. So more, more to follow on that front.
Really?
Great question.
Andy, the, the one comment question I've gotten, I just haven't known how to answer, is what do we do in situations where buses are crowded? Do we, how do we balance the, the system? What should we be telling folks when we hear that feedback? Or what should I be telling people?
Bill can talk a little bit about the procedure when we have a bus that is actually at capacity, what we do. But we always encourage folks to report it, to call into Metro Customer Care and report that that bus was overcrowded. We use that information to inform decisions. And Bill, you can talk about what we do on the road.
Yeah, we, we actually, we have a running log and we keep track of every one of those trips so that we can, we check those from day to day to day because we do see, sometimes there are patterns and sometimes it's just random. Sometimes one bus will be overcrowded one day and then the next day, the students move and the passengers move. So we build that over a period of time. So we're still collecting that information. We do have the ability to do some things like hold a bus so that it gets more of that load or we can even try to divert a bus over there if we need to. So it's in flux right now, but we have many different things that we monitor to make sure that we're trying to balance those loads out. And, and they do, they also naturally balance themselves out as well. We'll find that kids will balance those loads out themselves.
I would imagine if somebody does call in, it's good to have the bus number, the route number, the time and the location. But at the same point, you have APCs on the buses so you can find the data on the ridership as well, right?
Yeah, we really only need the bus number and a time. We've got the location and all of those things, yeah.
Bus number and time.
Yeah.
All right, great.
Yeah, I had a chance to go out to the Oakley Transit Center, I think on Thursday afternoon, and I just want to reiterate what you just said, Andy. It seemed to be like a very well-oiled machine. I saw several of our employees there, including Katrina, a Queensgate Division Manager, and Kim, a dispatcher. And they were just full of good spirit, they were helping, there were the city's community, I forget what they're, what they're called, community responders that were onsite, like the District Two Community Responders, which are not police officers, they're just like helpers. And then there were multiple Cincinnati Police Officers there and they all seemed to have a good rapport with one another. And it seemed like that this was just a great team effort and it was really nice to finally be able to see it in action. So I just wanted to give praise to all of those people that I met and then even had a chance to walk around and talk to some students and make sure that they, you know, were feeling safe and knew who to ask questions of and it was just really good to see it. So good job, everybody.
Thank you. Just one note on that, and that's kudos to, to Mike Wile and Brad Isaac from, from Bill's team. They actually convened a meeting here at Metro the week before school with all of the folks who, as part of their normal job, be it CPD, the city, the CPS security team, the 3-1-1 responders, our road supervision and safety security team, they all met here in this building prior to school to get to know each other, to get face-to-face, to get everybody's contact information and to make sure that they all knew what their roles were out on the road in operation. And I think that that's probably resulted in kind of the, the machine that you saw out there on Thursday. Any other questions on CPS? We'll send an email update out to the, the full board for those that weren't able to attend tonight. Yeah, just real quick, running down the, the, the projects and priorities. We continue to do outreach with the change in leadership here, making sure that the whole community is connected to Metro. We've done coffee chats externally, we're doing Ask Andy sessions internally, where I've been in all the divisions and talking to the folks here at Metro. Great opportunity to engage, a lot of great ideas, a lot of great conversation, and that continues throughout the month of September.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes, sir.
That you go to a great coffee place down here called Black Coffee?
Yes, we can do that, yes. Uh-huh. We got you. That's on the corner of.
Hell-free night?
Yeah, exactly.
Great coffee.
The other, the other piece that we're working on, you know, part, part of this report is to give the board snapshot updates as to some of these major things you approve. You approve a project, you approve a program, and then we needed that statutory, that regulatory authority to move forward, but then you might not hear about it for a while. So one of the exciting things, you approved the purchase of hybrid buses at some point in time. Those things take 18 months to, to manufacture and get delivered and then we have to onboard them and then we program these hybrid buses and they do incredible things. This next generation of buses actually allows us to go zero emissions in certain geographical zones. So we put in GPS fences around certain areas like hospitals and certain corridors and that hybrid bus will go all-electric and not create any emission as it goes through that sensitive zone. And our team has been testing that. We've operated 51,000 zero emission miles. This is all part of our alternative fuels plan. As you all know, we're taking a deliberate and careful approach to making sure we diversify the fuel in our fleet, but also doing it cost-effectively. And this is just one of those next milestones. You'll see those hybrids out about in the community and at certain points, they'll be silent and not running that diesel motor, which is pretty cool. You also approved major facility upgrades at Bond Hill in Queensgate for our operator and maintenance staff lounges and club rooms. Those construction projects are well underway and we'll be happy to share you some, with, with you some amazing photos of the, of the after. But in the meantime, our operators and maintenance staff are dealing with a lot of dust and construction and the progress that is renovation. So those are well underway and we've had great relationship with our contractor there. The next piece, bus stop modification and bus stop signs, we've been talking about this project since issue seven, I believe. And one of the challenges has been getting federal approval of the funds. We were awarded funds, we received some discretionary funds from some of our congressional delegation, but we weren't able to come into contract with the FTA because of all their rules and regulations and environmental requirements. Happy to report that we just executed that grant, which allows us to now move forward with actually doing some of that work. So you're going to start to see things pop out of the ground here and that's a big hurdle that kind of goes unsaid unless we bring it to your attention, but we're happy to report that we're going to be moving forward on those signs. And the last piece is university partnerships. We've been, a lot of intentional deliberate work in growing ridership in the Uptown area and with our hopefully next generation of riders. You can see here by this statistic, we had about 12,000 trips through our college programs in July of 2024 and we had 31,000 trips in July of 2025. So there's, that intentionality is paying off and we're seeing some robust ridership growth around Xavier, UC and Cincinnati State. Concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
May I just add a comment? If anybody interested in taking a look at the bus stop signs, new designs, they're right next to the kitchen.
And that really is the culmination of many years of work, starting initially with a bus stop realignment project, which took extensive analysis and community response and adjustments and now this realization of this new signage, which will really, I, I think, bring in more riders as they know exactly where the stops are, what the routes are, communicate to them. And I think it will be a great look for, for the system. So very excited about those signs going up. Make sure you guys keep us apprised maybe of the first one or two so we can, you come and see them and take a picture. I, I did go to the first coffee meeting with our new CEO. Brought two young fans while we were out doing some errands and I was particularly proud to see three of our leaders at the coffee meeting, talking with somebody from the community and really getting into detail on some history and some transportation issues. I'll say that my kids were more interested in the chocolate croissant, but they'll get there eventually. So thank you very much for doing that and all the work you're doing, Andy, to engage the community over the past several months.
Thank you.
I have one question and I know we spoke briefly about doing the tour at the facility.
Yes.
For everyone.
Yeah, exactly right. We have a new board member as of today, Raquel's with us, and we did the kind of desk orientation. Be a good time. we did the kind of desk orientation. Be a good time to do facility tours for anybody on the board who hasn't had the chance to see Queensgate, Bond Hill, access and the like. I don't know, John, you and Natalie have been working on that, if you have an update.
Yeah, no, exactly. Now that we have full boards, we'll look at scheduling some dates in the fall. We'll reach out to you, certainly those that have not been on a tour. But everybody is certainly welcome. Look for that to hit the calendar soon, or at least discussing and coordinating with your availability.
When is the completion for the upgrades? Is that in the fall?
It's really phased. We've got some smaller projects finishing probably November. The Queensgate facility, hopefully by the end of the year. But the Bond Hill facility, probably the second largest of the projects, into the end of Q1 next year. So, really kind of phase construction, phase finishing. You'll, you'll see that in various stages on the tour, right? Oh, no. Come, come see it. I, I get a kick out of going in and seeing the work, right? Show me down to the studs and everything ripped out and the promise of what's to come. So, it's exciting.
And, and just quite frankly, from a less formal process too, if anybody is out and about or happens to want to shoot me a text and, and has time, we can meet anywhere within the system. That's always an opportunity for you all as well.
Andy and I were also talking about a BRT tour. I imagine several of the board members would be interested in doing that. We don't have anything scheduled or on the timeline. But if you are interested in following those routes and, and discussing it, I know I would enjoy doing that kind of thing. And I would be more than happy to go along with you. And some of our leadership could perhaps come as well. So, just, we got a lot going on. Let's keep our eyes on it moving forward. Thank you very much. I will open the floor, though, to new business before we end up not looking at you, Pete. I'm just like, all right, hearing none. Thank you very much for coming this evening. We are adjourned.